The Lord be with you. Good morning brothers. Would you please shake your hands with somebody and tell him good morning? Hallelujah. Once again, we appreciate his grace. He's the primate of our church and leader of our church for this privilege to stand here to lead Bible study. We appreciate the dean of our church, his grace, the Archbishop Aida. Thank you so much sir. And his grace, the Archbishop of Lagos province. And my lords, thank you so much for this privilege to lead this Bible study in this very important, actually an August occasion in the month of August. Would you put your hands together for Jesus please? Put your hands together for Jesus, I appreciate him. He's a great God. Hallelujah. We have done study one and we a little bit started study two yesterday by the reading of the introduction. Now, we want to read the text and then we continue. Let's open our book to first Timothy chapter, chapter four. I will read from verse six to the end. First Timothy, chapter four. We have seven questions, but we are going to only answer six because the seventh question has been sufficiently answered by our bishop, the Reverend Williams. Thank you so much sir for that tremendous teaching you brought away. That has sufficiently answered question seven. So I read the text. "If you instruct the brethren in these things, you will be a good minister of Jesus Christ, nourished in the words of faith and of the good doctrine which you have carefully followed. But reject profane and old wise fables and exercise yourself towards godliness. For bodily exercise profits a little, but godliness is profitable for all things, having promise of the life that now is and of that which is to come. This is a faithful saying and worthy of acceptance. For to this end we labor and suffer reproach, because we trust in the living God, who is the Savior of all men, especially those who believe. These things command and teach. Let no one despise your youth, but be an example to the believers in word, in conduct, in love, in spirit, in faith, in purity. Till I come, give attention to reading, exhortation to doctrine. Do not neglect the gifts that is in you which was given to you by prophecy with the laying on of the hands of the eldership. Meditate on these things; give yourself entirely to them, that your progress may be evident to all. Take heed to yourself and to the doctrine; continue in them, for in doing these you will save both yourself and those who hear you." This is the word of the Lord. Let's bow heads and pray. A blessed father, we are grateful to you for this day that you have made. They will rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you for this very important conference that you have arranged to encounter our lives and to meet with our lives and to bring transformation into our lives. Father, we pray that you stop at nothing, particularly on this last day, until your work is done in our hearts and minds in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Lord, reach out to us by the power of your Holy Spirit. And Lord, do the work that you have specialized in doing over the centuries and over the hearts and lives of men across the globe. Thank you blessed father. We give you glory and praise. Hide me behind the cross that my brethren will not see me, but they will see Jesus and Him crucified. Thank you blessed redeemer. For in Jesus' mighty name we pray. I've not heard your amen. I thought I would hide here louder amen. Hallelujah. Now, we are on page sixty-eight stroke sixty-nine of our program booklet. And the questions we have. The questions we have are like this. "In view of falsehood rampant in Nigeria today, how can we know a good minister of the gospel?" Now I hope I will still have those with mics to help us to read. I think I will start from group five today. Group five. Would you take the mic to somebody to read verse six for us? Very quickly. Yes. Thank you. Somebody preferably in the front. Yes. Thank you.
If thou put the brethren in remembrance of the sins, thou shalt be good minister of Jesus Christ, nourished in the words of faith and of good doctrine whereunto thou hast attained.
Hallelujah. Now, would you help us group five, would you start to crack it? "In view of the falsehood rampant in Nigeria today, can we know a good minister of the gospel? How can we know a good minister of the gospel?"
The kind of doctrine that a minister puts forth and the intentionality of a minister to be able to put forward and maintain the doctrines of the fathers of faith, the traditions that has been passed on, handed over to us from ages up till date. I think that is also a pointer to a good minister.
Thank you. Yes, can somebody contribute? Please, okay, group, come to group two. Come to group two if you can get somebody to contribute. Yes sir.
The good minister can be seen by way of his teachings of the truth to his membership.
Okay, last person. Yes sir. A good minister.
In the advent of probably AI, I don't think teaching the truth may not be sufficient to know a good minister. But those who way of life exemplified what they teach, who they are living based on what they are teaching. They are teaching the truths, word of God, and they are also living the same. They have a track record that can justify what they are living.
Hallelujah. So a good minister is somebody who has carefully followed, isn't it? He has carefully followed the doctrine of Christ and he has been nourished by the word of Christ, by the word of faith. And his teaching the same, exhorting the church to follow the same pattern. He is witnessing for Christ by his life and by his words. Saint Francis, one of our church fathers, said preach the gospel and if necessary, use words. In other words, we are to preach the gospel by our life and by our words. We have to, we have to carefully follow the things that we have received, carefully follow it. The doctrine that have been passed to us, we have to carefully follow it and we have to be nourished by it. As a matter of fact, we can't be able to preach the gospel with genuity if we have not been nourished by it. The word of God has to nourish you. You have to grow in it. You have to be grounded in it and you have to be groomed in it. Your life has to be through and through the gospel, expressed in the way you speak, expressed in the way you talk, expressed in the way you behave. You have to behave it. You have to bear it. And you have to hand it over to as many as you come across. May God help us to be able to accomplish this task in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. A good minister. Let's go to question two. "How can the servant of God exercise themselves towards godliness in the context of the Anglican Church?" Verse seven to nine, I think we'll come to group three now. Group, yeah, group three. Yes, thank you. Somebody read verse seventy-nine and somebody begin to crack it from that group.
Have nothing to do with godless meat and old wine taste. Rather, train yourself to be godly, for physical training is of some value. But godliness has value for all things, holding promise for both the present life and the life to come. This is a trust word they say that deserves full acceptance.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Yes, so group three, how can, let's try to answer the question. How can the servant of God exercise themselves towards godliness in our context, in the Anglican church?
In our context, in the Anglican church, I would first say that a minister of God must focus on the ministry and not on this time preferment, but focusing on the ministry, maintaining integrity and of course going through the scripture and living it for people to see.
Okay, any contribution from group four, any contribution please? Good, okay, yeah, that's the group, yeah, that's group three still, you can go ahead.
The minister avoids just by one, by avoiding falsehood and false doctrine and constant dwelling in the word of the Lord.
Hallelujah. Thank you, avoiding falsehood and false gospel and constantly maintaining the word of God. Yes, group four, now down there, yes, 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 please. Somebody from the front side so that mic, we don't have network issues. Yes, somebody please.
My lord, like somebody said yesterday, one of our fathers said yesterday, the issue of handling the liturgy. He said the liturgy is not dead, but it is a person that is handling it.
Yes.
So in context with this, anybody that is going to get it right must be a master of the liturgy and he himself be a living pastor, not a dead pastor. Because once he handles the liturgy, becomes a dead liturgy.
Thank you. Hallelujah. There is no dead church. There can only be a dead pastor. But if you send the correct person there, the church comes alive. May God help us in Jesus' name. Now look at, look at, look at the verse seven. For how can a servant, how can a servant of God exercise himself towards godliness in our context, in the Anglican church? So first of all, he has to reject the old profane and old wise fables. Are we together? He has to reject the profane and old wise fables. Now let's, let's look at what a primate presented to us during, during the Nawi twenty-three. Let's look at it. "The importation," that's in the middle, "the importation of the rummage mass liturgical practices, such as burning of incense and other practices are not permitted. The practices and indoctrination of the use of sale of special candles, holy water or special apparel or handkerchief or consulting of mediums or reference of special relics and objects are not allowed." In other words, these things are fables. Anything that is not consistent with the doctrine of Christ, anything that is not consistent with our thirty-nine articles, anything that is not consistent with what we believe is fables, is at best fables. Somebody said, "Any gospel you preach that is not centered on Christ is fables. Any gospel that the cross is removed is fables. It's at best fables." And look at it, let's just a little below. We stand on this, we stand on this, that we are saved by grace in the Lord Jesus Christ. We have, let me take it again. We stand on this, they were saved by faith in the Lord Jesus Christ by the grace of God. As the scripture says, states, "This is the stone Jesus that was rejected by you, the builders, which has become the chief cornerstone. Nor is there salvation in any other, for there is no name under heaven given among men by which we must be saved." This is the gospel upon which we stand. That's why we stand. Hallelujah. Can we all say that's why we stand together? Can we repeat that? That's why we stand. Hallelujah. And in the premise address in this conference, you would have had him telling us about the five solars. The five solars, the solar crystals, Christ alone. The solar fiday, by faith alone. The solar gracia, by grace alone. The solar scriptura, by the scriptures alone. And solar dio gloria, to the glory of God alone. That's where we stand. So we don't, we are not permitted to preach fables. We are not permitted to bring relics. We are not permitted. And those that are doing it are doing it for economic expediences. There's going to be a miracle service, there's going to be a miracle service. So all of you, you should come prepared. You will come prepared and in our kiosk, you will find handkerchiefs. And then a handkerchief that is sold for fifty naira, you're going to sell it for five hundred naira. So people don't buy from anywhere, just come and buy from that kiosk. And by the end of that so-called miracle service, the man is smiling home with hundreds of thousands of naira. Taking advantage of people. We must not do it. It's fables. May God grant us repentance, where we have done practice that before in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. I've not heard our amen. Our amen is in Lagos University Teaching Hospital. A bigger amen. Hallelujah. Thus we have a stand. As a hymn that I like, we have a gospel to proclaim. We have a gospel to proclaim. And we have to proclaim it with our lives in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. And then we have to exercise ourselves unto godliness. And as we exercise ourselves unto godliness, yet taking note that godly exercise profits little. Exercise ourselves unto godliness, godliness that is focused on eternity. May God grant us grace as we do this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Now let's, we'll answer question three and four together. Discuss the cost price of this phrase, "We trust in the living God." Verse ten. Can we have someone in group two reading that please? Group two. Verse ten and eleven. Yes.
Verse ten.
And, yes, and eleven.
For to this end, we both labor and suffer reproach, because we trust in the living God, who is the Savior of all men, especially those who believe. These things command and they teach.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
What is a cost price? What do you pay? When you choose to trust in the living God, what do you pay? What do you pay? What price do you pay? Yes, group two, you can begin to crack it and then group one.
Praise the Lord.
We make contribution.
Trusting God.
Group one, that's over there.
Yes. Trusting God requires that we must be ready to obey God's commandments in full, even when it is going to be difficult to do that, as in the case of Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, in the case of Daniel. It also requires that we should believe in God's goodness and God's provisions, even when situations seem uncertain and very difficult, as in the case of Nigeria today. Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah. Yes, contribution from group one. Yes. What is a cost price?
Amen.
Amen.
We see here that it's need to strive, to labor, possess earnestly content. We have to exert the spiritual energy that is needed to stand on what we believe. We must not be moved by all these things that are being carried on in the nations of Nigeria. So we must strive, standing firm on the faith and content earnestly for it. Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah. We have to contend for it. So we have to, let's, let's read those verses again. Verse. Ten and eleven. Yves Saint-Cloud read.
Yes, I read.
Yes, please. Oh, go ahead.
Verse ten and eleven. In fact, we labor and strive for this because we have put our hope in the living God, who is the Savior of everyone, especially of those who believe.
Hallelujah. The New King James Version says here, "For to this end we labor and suffer reproach." We suffer reproach, because we trust in the living God, who is the Savior of all men, especially those who believe. We suffer reproach, because you trust in God, you suffer reproach. And as I was, as I was looking at this and in view of the things and the issues God has been raising with us, I saw that there are values that every minister of God must cherish. Within our context in the Anglican church, there are values that you must, that must guard and guide your ministry labor. As a matter of fact, it's like a wall that you cannot go beyond this wall. This is where we stand. There are values of the doctrine of Christ, there are values from what Apostle Paul has been teaching us in this Bible study and in the course of all the lectures that we have been going through and all the exhortations we've been receiving. There is a manner of life that you have to take very seriously, your character, your purpose, your faith, your long suffering, your love, your perseverance, your humility, your humility. Because when we look at what Paul wrote to us in Acts of the apostle chapter twenty, verse nineteen to twenty-one, he tells us about how he labored with great, with great humility, not with pride. Hard work, how he labored with his hands. There are values that must guard and guide and guide our ministry labors. Hallelujah. There are things you can't do. Of course, as we believed in Christ, like we used to sing in SU and FCS. "The things I used to do, I do them no more. The things I used to do, I do them no more. The things I used to do, I do them no more." That's right. Together now. "There is a great change since I'm born again. There is a great change since I'm born again. There is a great change since I'm born again. There is a great change since I'm born again." Brothers. Our ministry to make a headway, we have to have values. This is what I can do, this is what I can do. This is why I stand, this is why I don't stand. And it's been clearly explained to us. And when you have values, you're going to have vices that will try to afflict your life. He said, "We suffer reproach." Vices, reproach. He said, he tells, he retells us in Acts chapter twenty, "How the Jews were plotting against him, lying in wait. City men bound themselves on their course that they would not eat unto the keeper." That your heart going to have values means that you are, Satan is going to see you as an enemy and he's going to plot over your life. He's going to plot. He said, "Look, as I'm going to Jerusalem, I'm not even sure what will happen to me. It's only, it's only known to me that afflictions and suffering and imprisonment are going to happen to me." But he said, "None of these things move me." Somebody said, "None of these things move me." "None of these things move me, nor that count I my life, so dear to me, that I may finish the course and the task of proclaiming the grace of God." There are vices, the enemy is going to plot against you. Persecutions, afflictions, rejection. Paul was rejected. Alexander the copas meet, he said, "He did me evil." And they may not be far, those that are going to do evil are not going to be far. In fact, I, I used to, I used to say, you know, I'm sorry, but you see, sometimes you see some people living among us as pastors. What we specialize in doing is bad biting others. Tell bearing. Among us, there could be self-appointed journalists, even though they are not in our station, but they know what is happening in our station and how to take our report, evil report. You would never be among such people. But sometimes I said, it's like sometimes the devil will choose some people and send them to the Bible school and pay their school fees. Such people don't lack school fees. Such people don't lack school fees. They don't like school fees. He'll pay their school fees and then they will graduate and they'll come and be ordained and we, because we are still in the flesh as bishops, we actually trust the examining chaplains to find a flaw for us. But sometimes we ordain such people and they come to perpetuate evil. May God deliver us from such people in the name of Jesus Christ, vices. But none of these things should move us, neither should we count our lives so dear to us that we may be able to accomplish the task. And he tells him, "Teach and command these things." Teach and command these things. May God grant us grace to do just that in the name of Jesus Christ. Now, number five. What is the main thrust of our calling into the ministry in the Anglican Church? Verse twelve to thirteen. Can group one still read those verses? And then group five will try to help us to crack it.
Let no man despise your youth, but be thou an example of the believers in the world, in charity, in spirit, in faith, in purity. Till I come, give attention to the reading, to exhortation, to doctrines.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah. What is the main thrust of our calling into the ministry within our context in the Anglican Church? Yes, group five. Can we have someone responding to this question? Is somebody with mic there? Yes. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Verse two says, "Let no man despise your youth, but an example to the believers in worlds, in conduct, in love, in spirit, in faith, total trusting God in faith, in spite of every situation."
Hallelujah. Total trust in God in spite of any and every situation. Yes, any contribution? From group five, stay group five.
I want to come from the area he emphasized on being an example. I think we are supposed to portray the light. If we see that it is not done right and we say they are not doing it well, I think it behoves on us as Christians, particularly as Anglican clergy of church of Nigeria, people that God will hold responsible for Nigeria, as our daddy say, to portray and beam the light of the example that is expected of us as believers and as clergy.
Hallelujah. We must be example. You know, Timothy was in Ephesus. And Ephesus was noted for being like a cosmopolitan city, like the city of Lagos, Potacot, all the sea, because it was by the port. Sheep were coming with goods. There was the exchange of goods and services in Ephesus. So there were people that were rich. And as a young man, he could be intimidated. But Paul tells him, "Let no man despise your youth, but be an example." Hallelujah. When I went to be the chaplain of ABU, it was at the age of thirty-five. And some of the professors, the old professors, you know, some would say, "This chap." You know, and I'm chaplain, so this chap, this chap, this chap, this chap, what is he gonna do, this chap? But God granted me grace. He had given me clear instructions, clear instruction of how I should do. Just focus on the gospel. Don't focus on the day-to-day running of the church as in how money comes and how money goes. Now, some of us are so concerned about that and we pursue that and lose the grace of God. And God granted me grace to focus on the preaching of the gospel. Anytime I had opportunity to preach the gospel, actually, some of them thought, "He shouldn't be preaching always. He should just be visiting and be counseling." I was a chap, a young man. But as long as I had opportunity to preach the gospel, I gave myself to prepare as if that was my last message. I would preach it as if that is my last message, as if the trumpet is gonna sound and I'm gonna be raptured. God granted me grace. And one of those professors that, you know, used to, you know, call me chap, he was traveling and he came to my house. And he says, "Sir, you are the best person that has come to be a chaplain in this chapel, chapel of redemption." And when you hear a professor calling you sir, you know that he has seen something. Are we together? Now, be an example to the believers in word, in deed, in purity, in charity, in spirit. Be an example. Hallelujah. May God help us to be examples. Verse thirteen. Can somebody make comment on verse thirteen before I make my comment? Uh, group two, group two, please, uh, group two, by my right hand side.
We as ministers, by the grace of God, as Paul admonishes Timothy, if we stand by the word of God and live by this, our doctrines of faith, we will turn Nigeria around irrespective of who is there as the leader. Many a time, we look off, as our prime mate said, that we overlook leadership as dating, politics as dating. But if we stand in that position, as Paul said, "Despise not your youth. Let no man," I think, "make impact."
Thank you.
And then this gospel will go far.
Hallelujah. Let me read verse thirteen. "Till I come, give attention to reading, to exhortation, to doctrine. Give attention. Till I come, give what?" Can we read that verse together? One to go. "Till I come, give attention to reading, to exhortation, to doctrine." One more time. "Till I come, give attention to reading, to exhortation, to doctrine." Now, as Anglicans, you know, we appreciate the Anglican literature. How that in every service, the Old Testament will be read, the Psalm will be read, the Epistle will be read, the Gospel will be read. It's a beauty. That's the beauty of the Anglican Church. Our services are controlled, are centered on the reading. And Paul is saying, "Till I come." In other words, in our context, "Teach Jesus come, give attention." There are things you are gonna pay attention to. Can you say to yourself, "There are things I must pay attention to?" Hallelujah. And that is the reading. Don't forsake that the scriptures be read. Don't copy, don't copy what others are doing. Actually, they are copying us. Give attention to reading. Give attention to doctrine. Give attention to exhortation. Give attention to this. Now, now, you see, did you hear Paul say, "Give attention to those that are approaching you, that are persecuting you, that are afflicting you, that are rejecting you, that are plotting against you, that are backbiting against you"? Did you hear him say that? Hello? Did you hear Paul say that? He didn't say it. Because those are not important. Those things are not important. But sometimes when we hear that someone is backbiting us, we are getting offended and we're getting distracted. Actually, the word is backbiting, biting people at the back. So someone who is biting at the back, should you pay attention to that person? You're riding his front, at your back, biting you. Should you cry because of that kind of person? No. Give attention to reading. Give attention to exhortation and give attention to doctrine. May God help us to do just this, to the glory of God, in the name of Jesus Christ. Um, so that we can ask questions. What measures must we take so that we do not neglect the giftings of God in our lives or over our lives? Um, can somebody from group three read those verses for us? Verse fourteen to fifteen.
Yes, verse fourteen to fifteen says, "Until I come, give attentions to public reading of the scripture." Okay, fourteen, okay, I'm taking.
Fourteen and fifteen, sir.
Okay, sir. Fourteen and fifteen says, "Do not neglect the scriptural gift of how you have given, do not neglect, do not neglect the spiritual gift you have given to you, I have given to you and confirmed by prophetic word. When the elders laid hands on you, take pains with these things, be absorbed in them, be concerned."
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Okay, sir. I think we've gotten it, isn't it? Because of our time, we don't have time. You can sit down, sir. Now, "Do not neglect, do not neglect, what measures must we take so that we don't neglect the giftings of God in our lives?" As we go back, God has endowed so much on us. Yes, sir.
The measure we should take is the measure of being focused in the giftings you have.
Yes.
Even if your giftings are not pronounced, focus on them. Don't allow the pronounced giftings to distract you. If your giftings are in the children ministry, be teaching the children. Don't allow those who stand on the big platforms to make you feel that the giftings you have are not noticed. Be focused in what you are doing and God will meet you there and will prosper you there. Thank you.
Hallelujah. Because of our time, we don't have time any longer. Please, don't neglect. Our brother mentioned there are some people on big platforms and you think, ah, let me, amen, amen, and you begin to develop ambition. You know, there's something that we call inordinate ambition. Ambition that God has not ordained, the ambition that God has not ordained. Let's not give ourselves to it because it's destructive. Every one of us has gifts, is endowed. Can you say to yourself, "I am greatly endowed." And we're not missing words. You are greatly endowed. That's what a bishop saw and you were ordained. So don't neglect it. Fund it to flame. Fund it to flame. By consistent and conscientious prayers. Continue in the things that you have received. Fund them to flame. And when you do that, the Lord will bless your ministry and your life in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Pray. If you can't speak to a thousand people, you can speak to ten people. If you can't preach like Paul, you can't just lead the little children. We have a hymn, a very classic hymn. So don't jump yourself, don't run into what, where you have not reached. Just walk gradually, gradually and gradually and walk into the grace of God. Walk into the faith of Christ. Walk into what God has set for you to achieve for Him in your church and in the dioceses and in the church of Nigeria. We read the conclusion. "We must labor to this end, that we be found to be good ministers of the gospel, ready to bear the costs of godly living, Christian living in times like this, like Paul, the apostle. We must never be ashamed of the gospel of Christ and the heritage and identity that we have received." Paul said, "I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, for it is the power of God unto salvation, to the Jews first and then to the Greeks." We must not be ashamed. Particularly in this age of revisionist and global agenda. A G B T Q plus. You know, there's a plus behind it. That which means they will continue, but they will not continue in the name of Jesus Christ. You have not heard your amen o. Continue. The gifts we have received must be daily fund to flame as we watch our lives diligently and as we continue in the race set before us with every discipline, determination and devotion. We couldn't read that. But you know, Paul was exhorting Timothy to exercise the discipline and is likened to the discipline of a soldier. The discipline of a soldier. One of my friends, he went for training, for commissioning in NDA and he came back and told me that the training they are giving them, they were not expecting you to be able to reason correctly. By the time you go through that training, I mean, Lord Bishop is here. He has more to tell us. The discipline of a soldier. Your road is straight, no corner, corner. The determination of an athlete. Olympics is going on. The people that win gold are those that are determined and have disciplined their lives. Disciplined their lives. Determined and they are determined to achieve and to take the gold or the silver. The devotion of a farmer. Farming when it is joyful, when it is not joyful. Actually, farming is not joyful because your back will tell the story. Your hands will tell the story. But does the farmer leave family because of that? No, it continues. He devoted as a farmer and in the diligence of a student. Study to show thyself approved unto God, a workman that needed not to be ashamed, rightly dividing the word of truth. Can we read the memory verse together? Can we stand on our feet, please? God bless you. Thank you. On our feet. First Timothy, chapter four, verse sixteen. One to go. "Take heed unto yourself and unto the doctrine; continue in them; for in doing these, thou shalt both save thyself and them that hear thee." The last study, you will do it yourself, but you will also note that the word, there is a word, continue there. We are to continue. We are to continue. We are to continue. May the Lord bless us as we continue in our Anglican heritage and identity in the task of the proclamation of the gospel put in our hands in this age, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Can we pray? Just pray for yourself. Ask the Lord to help you to continue in the things that you have received, in the commission. in the commission wherein you stand. Ask the Lord to help you to continue. The Bible says, "And they continued steadfastly in the apostles' doctrine and teaching and fellowship." That you will continue. You will not let down the button. The athletes who are on hundred, four by one hundred meters relay must not lose the button. If they lose the button, even if they take first, it will be that they have not run. Don't allow me to drop the button of Anglicanism. Pray for yourself. God, there are sidetractions and distractions that you will not, you will not lose the button. Our blessed Father, we are grateful to you. Thank you for the things you have committed to us in this week, in these four days, and you will finish up today. We're asking that, please, stop at nothing. Go ahead and brood over us, and brood over our lives. Lord, eliminating whatever that is not desirable in our hearts and lives, deleting anything that is not desirable in our lives, and helping us to come to, come to understand what you have said before us as your chosen people. Those that you have chosen, those that you have elected, and those that you've commissioned. Thank you, blessed Father. We give you all the glory and all the praise. For in Jesus' mighty name we pray. I've not heard, amen. A louder amen.